Gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the September 14, 2009 City of San Carlos Redevelopment Agency meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Item number two, changes to the order of agenda. Any changes? Staff changes, okay. Item three, report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
No reportable action from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item number four, council communications and announcements. Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of things. Let's see here. First of all, I wanted to let everybody know that the Art and Wine Festival is coming up Saturday, October 10 and 11, and they are looking for volunteers. So please contact the chamber. They need a lot of folks to help with selling and getting things together. Number two of four, there is a presentation called Passing the Torch, We Can Do It, a forum for young women interested in public office. Fiona Ma is going to be the keynote speaker. This will be October 7, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Our very own city clerk, Christine Boland, will be one of the speakers. And somehow or another, I'm going to be on there. I don't know why.
Yeah, must be your feminine side.
Yeah, I'm just going to leave that comment there. But anyway, looking forward to it. And then please RSVP by Friday, October 2. And you can go to www.cawomenlead.org. Again, this will be at Notre Dame High School in Belmont. Wanted to wish all of our neighbors who celebrate Jewish traditions, hashanah to all. It's going to be New Year on Friday. May the New Year bring us peace. And also, this is also the ninth month of the Islamic calendar, Mr. Mayor, so it is Ramadan, which means 1.6 billion Muslims right now are fasting during the daylight hours. So I brought everybody some dates, which is sort of traditional to break fast with. So there's a boatload out there. Please don't chomp on them. They do have pits. You will lose teeth. Bad things would happen. So about 7:18, you'll see me starting to eat and drink. I know that folks get cranky at late meetings, but it's been a long day without food. So there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmad. Mr. Lewis?
None, thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
I had a question about correspondence that we received from the city attorney. We all received information about homelessness and then also regarding the way we go about labor negotiations. And I wanted to find out where that puts us as a council in discussing those items when we receive memos like that.
Well, the memos, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, the memos that I sent you are confidential memos, but some of the items and issues in those could certainly be brought up for an open session at a future meeting.
So if we wanted to agendize something like that for discussion as a council to look at policies regarding those items, we can still do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Royce?
So one announcement, our Sister City Association is having its 10th annual Taste of Italy this Saturday in our downtown park. For $20, you get a beverage glass of wine and you get food from San Remo's, from Town, from La Tasca, Spazo's, Giuliana's, and Remus. So it's a full plate. It's a great downtown park. The weather's warming up. And if you want to find out more, you could go to our 94070.org and click on Sister Cities, or tickets are available at the chef shop down on Laurel Street.
What time does that start, do you know?
It starts at 5:00 to 6:30. You'll be full by 6:15.
The only people that don't work are going to be ablute.
Is it Saturday or Friday?
Saturday, I'm sorry. Saturday, Saturday from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. the 19th.
Thank you. Okay, I have nothing this evening. Moving on, we'll go to number five, public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Anyone here wishing to speak on items not on the posted agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to number six. Approval consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Gentlemen?
I would approve consent calendar items 6A through N.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, before we do that, I did want to pull a couple of items. And I had a question on item G.
Okay. G?
So the question, may I ask the question on item G?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so the question on item G is, that does impact Crestview, and I know, I think, I'm just concerned about conflict of interest. If you lived near this project, would you have to recuse yourself from that item?
You, if it's within 500 feet of your home, depending on the segment that we're talking about, you may have to recuse yourself. I don't think it is under the public generally exception.
Okay.
Well, the whole street is within 500 feet of where I live. And aren't we doing the whole street, or are we doing just part? It doesn't, I don't think we have a detail of where it is, do we?
But I think that, I don't know, Robert, is that something that's, something that's potentially out in the future, or is it something that's in this item? Because my review is...
I would say it's not in this item. It's not part of the action of the item. It's really provided for the council's information. And the segment in question would be from Edmonds to Melundy. But it's, what the gist of it is, is that there's savings on the ARA grant. And for the council's information, we're looking to read, to use the savings for a second project. And Crestview Drive would be the candidate for the second project.
Well, since certainly that's in front of me, so I guess I just recuse myself on this then?
Well, what I was saying is, I'm not sure this item, but if it comes back, because that's just a possible use of the savings, as I understand it, not this particular, this you're just approving the expenditure that's before you.
Okay. That's fine. So I'll vote for it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott.
Just one second. I must have misunderstood something. I was looking at the agenda item and not the staff report item, which is...
The recommendation is to select Crestview.
Yeah, why don't I just, why don't I just recuse myself, and then that'll be fine.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's a good point. I didn't even, I didn't even think of that. I just assumed that, because I didn't suggest that Robert do this on this street. I just want everybody to know, I did not suggest this. So I'll recuse myself.
So I think... A picture further than 500 feet from this section?
No, not from Edmonds all the way up to Melundy. It runs right by my house. Melundy is the next street up. Yeah, yeah, trust me. No. Okay, what's the other item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add on that? We do have a citizen that has come here that wanted, well, not yet, not yet, just wanted to speak on item 6G. So can I just pull that? She wanted to contribute some thoughts.
Sure, we'll just pull it off, and we'll talk about it in a minute. But go ahead, Mr. Grocott, another one?
Well, seeing that 6G's been dealt with, I wanted to pull items I, M, and N.
I'm sorry, I?
M and N.
M as in mother, N as in no? Okay. All right. Okay, those three. So right now, we've got A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, and J, and K, and L. Those are all non-controversial at this moment. So Mr. Ahmad, did you want to amend your motion to approve all those?
I would approve 6A through F, 6H, 6J, K, and L.
Okay.
Second?
Thank you. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Because there's someone here wishing to speak on G, it's G?
Yes.
Would that individual, please come forward. And did you fill out a form, or could you fill out a form before you leave tonight with your name so that we can put it in the record?
Yes.
We try to limit this to about two minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Marie Cammonson.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. This is the item that I think we were talking about just a minute ago.
Yes.
Item G. So you need to recuse yourself on this particular item.
Do I have to leave?
Yeah.
Darn. Okay, Mr. Royce, you're up.
So I'll give you an extra minute because of all that talk.
Do I have to leave the building? Do I have to leave the thing?
No, watching on TV.
Go ahead.
Take as long as you want.
And by the way, Marie has been our champion for our safe routes to school in town here. Please proceed.
Hi. As he just mentioned, my name is Marie Cammonson, and I'm the coordinator for Safe Routes to School. I was reading over the recommendation here to, with the extra money from the stimulus funds last year, that they would like to go and pave Hillcrest. And I would like to highly recommend that you use those funds for a Safe Roots to School project. We recently lost the third grant for Safe Roots to School infrastructure fixes. And we've been told time and time again that it's difficult to do any kind of fixes related to Safe Roots to School because there's no money. And I'm hoping that maybe you can use some of this extra money. I don't know what the time constraint is, but if you could use some of this extra money for a project that is related to children walking and biking to school. I just want to make one quick comment, that there's this big, huge healthcare debate right now. And from that debate, I'm not hearing anything about preventative medicine approach. And to me, if we can get our children walking and biking and exercising and away from the television, currently, we're losing our PE teachers, and children just aren't getting enough of that. And I think this is one great way of preventative medicine, to get them in the habit of doing something better, safely walking to school, so we can get more and more children on board doing it. That's pretty much it. Oh, I do have a suggestion also. If it were to pave a road, if the money was to go to pave a road, I suggest that maybe pave Phelps Road, because I drove both of the roads. And Phelps is in really bad shape as well. And if you were to pave Phelps Road, you could also, that is the main entrance to the school that has no sidewalks, and the children pretty much have to walk in the street. And if you repave that, and I don't know if you could get away with making it a little bit wider, but maybe adding some nice striping, so the children have a designated place to walk when they walk up that street onto the school. Another suggestion for the money I have is maybe impavement lights on San Carlos Avenue. We've been fighting for those for quite some time. And that would make a huge difference for all the children that walk across San Carlos Avenue. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said a third grant had been rejected?
I believe two from Parvise, one state and one federal. And then we just lost one that Robert just applied for, which he did a great job, but it's highly competitive. And so that's why it's nice to know that there's some extra money here that maybe possibly that could be used for this reason.
Great. So I think, I would probably direct a question to Robert. I was just curious that this was a CCAG grant. How much was it, and why did we lose it?
Well, it's a, was actually the state grant, and it was a competition at Caltrans. And the grant was $450,000 to do, to address the very situation that Marie Cammonson talked about, which is safe routes to a Rundle school. And it is highly competitive. It wasn't as if we got the grant and then lost it. We just never won the competition to get the funds. So... So.
Any other questions while Robert's there?
Sure.
Yeah, and perhaps you're already going to respond to this, but I know that this, part of this particular funding has to do with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Mm-hmm.
And do the same, with the same funding, you know, the arterial or collector streets is a part of this, I believe, how would that relate to something like a Phelps Road?
Right. That we couldn't repave Phelps Road with this funding, because Phelps is a local street, so it wouldn't qualify for repaving. The Safe Route to School work would qualify, but, in one respect, but in other respect, it, it's not a good fit for the funds. Because they've given us a very tight timeline to actually design the project, obligate the money, and award the contract. And you, if you do anything that digs into the ground at all, you end up going through a number of additional environmental studies, which should basically make it so that it's, you can't meet the schedule. So we have to pick a project which, which just scrapes the surface of the street and repaves the street, unfortunately. I definitely believe in what Ms. Cammonson said about the Safe Route to Schools project, and I'm constantly looking for new fund sources and ways to fund that. But unfortunately, this isn't a good match to that because of the tight restrictions.
Through the chair.
Okay. Let's get the rest of the public, see if there's any hang on. So can I just ask, is there anybody else would like to speak on this before council starts talking more about it? Okay, hear motion to close the public comment?
Did that little girl have her hand up to speak, or was she just putting her hand up? I'm not sure.
Did someone else want to speak? No, okay.
I think the one little girl wanted to speak.
You're, you're welcome to come. This would be a perfect time to hear what you have to say. Come on up.
Thanks, Robert.
Great. Great, thank you. If you could just say what your, your name, and then what's-
My name's Emily. I just want to ask you if you can please make the routes a little bit safer. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay. Hear motion to close the public comment?
Yeah.
Don't need to, it's-
We don't need, this is-
Not a public hearing.
You can just close it.
So, Mr. Royce moved to approve item 6G.
Excuse me, Matt, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I had a question, because I understand what the city engineer's saying regarding environmental issues, if you start digging into the soil and so forth. And certainly, some of the projects that have been talked about to create safe routes to particularly Rundle, required some retaining walls and so forth with the sidewalks, because they're the differential between the roadway and the, and the existing sidewalk now. But the lady who spoke did mention inlight paving. And I know a lot of cities have installed those. There's actually some controversy about whether those create a more safe situation or a less safe situation, because drivers can be confused about what, what they really mean, and, and it also sometimes gives a false sense of security to pedestrians, that, oh, the lights are flashing, I can cross, and don't have to worry about looking so much. But, so I don't know if we've, if our TNC has flushed that one out completely or not, but I, I wouldn't suppose that requires digging into the ground too much or at all. So is that something we could look at, or is it, like I said, not flushed out enough by TNC?
Well, that was part of the grant application that we didn't receive. Unfortunately, it would require trenching in the ground, because we'd have to trench the conduits in the ground.
Okay.
And the latest, but the latest data is that it, it does make a difference in combination with other, other devices.
Devices, yeah. Okay. All right.
Very well. Any other thoughts? Hear motion?
Move to approve 6G.
Second.
Have a first and a second? Roque?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli has been recruited.
We can leave him out there.
I don't want to.
You gotta come back.
Music, drums.
Well, if he's gonna walk that slow, why don't you just take the next item?
Um. We completed G. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. So move on to item seven. Reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting, and it appears we have none this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Royce?
We have no additional reports.
No reports, additional reports, okay. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings. The first is item 8A, consideration of abandoning a five-foot wide strip of unused public right of way along the southerly side of the 200 and 300 blocks of Molten Avenue between Plymouth Avenue and Beverly Drive. Mr. Well?
Yes, Mayor, council, this is a routine matter. The, we were just talking about sidewalks, though, and I'll note that even after approving this, there remains enough room on Molten Drive for a sidewalk. Basically, like 10 feet behind the curb right now, and this would abandon five feet, and so there would still be room, a five-foot, room for a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay.
And so I'd recommend approval, subject to any information that might come out in the public hearing.
Questions for Mr. Well from the council? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Open public hearing.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, gentlemen, what would you like to do on this?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of resolution number 2009 dash-
69.
Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, abandonment of five-foot wide strip of unused public right of way along the southerly side of the 200, 300 block of Molten Avenue between Plymouth Avenue and Beverly Drive.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 8A is passed. Moving on to 8B, consideration of abandoning an unused portion of six-foot wide public utilities easement and a 10-foot wide public utilities easement at 35 Hartford Avenue. Mr. Well?
Similarly, Mayor, this is recommended for approval. This actually is well off of Hartford Drive. It's, if you look at the plot, it's actually right down by the property owner's front door. And it's just really cleaning up a property issue that dates back to when the house was originally built.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Well on this item?
No.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item tonight?
Move to close public hearing.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of resolution number 2009 dash-
70.
Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, abandonment of an unused portion of six-foot wide public utilities easement and a 10-foot wide public utilities easement at 35 Hartford Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve this item. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, moving on. Item nine, new business. Item 9A, consideration of adopting the city of San Carlos's strategic plan. Mr. Malpe?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. On August 25th, the council, along with the city manager and department head directors, met for the eighth time to review and develop the city's six-month strategic plan. That plan includes 41 new six-month objectives. It also included changing one of the names of a three-year goal from improve the quality of life to preserve and enhance our distinct community character. The plan and its draft proposal is attached to this report. I thought perhaps I'd turn it back to the council at this point for any discussion and modifications of the plan, at which time it'll be the council's call to either direct me to go ahead and read the full plan into the public record, which is recommended by our facilitator, or simply to adopt this strategic plan as either it exists now or as you amend it.
Okay, questions, comments? Mr. Malpe?
I have a couple of discussion items for us, but no, no questions for Mr. Malpe.
Okay. I guess we can discuss. Go ahead.
Go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. The, the two items that I wanted to raise that would be associated with this are, the first one is, I know Mr. Davids, our former council member and mayor, is working to put together a citizens group that would do volunteer work. And we didn't address anything at the strategic, or at the retreat regarding coordination efforts with Mr. Davids, or even trying to touch base regarding where those efforts are and how we might, you know, segue into those. And I was wondering if we might want to direct staff to, to do some work in that area.
Okay. Anyone else have any interest in that?
So, Councilmember Grocott, can I ask you a question? Does that fit in the, yeah, enhance community awareness, involvement, and engagement? Is that where you're looking at?
I suppose it would come under that heading, yes, yeah.
What page is that on? Is that a three-year goal?
You know, we do have something, wait a second, though, where I remember putting it in. We have, can I refer you to actually the next item, to preserve our character? Item six? Because I worked on this objective with, with a few people, including Doug Long. We have the last item here, to present city council for action strategies to support community events. Can we just add to that, to support community organizations and events? Would that cover San Carlos together? Because there may be other organizations that we may want to help-
Sure.
-figure out how to support, create, and enhance our community with organizations. That's an example. There may be more.
Yeah.
But rather than events, have organizations and events within my recommendation?
Sure.
Mr. City Manager, is that appropriate, that we can do that with-
That would be fine.
Hopefully, Mr. Long won't have any problem with that?
Certainly.
Okay, do we need, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to vote on this?
You can vote on any changes all at once at the end when, when you-
Okay, great, okay, thank you. All right, that's another item, Mr. Grocott?
And the other item was changes to the policies, I suppose you would say, regarding the tennis courts and fee structure and so forth. And I know we got some emails from Jeff Peterson, the president of the Tennis Association, San Carlos Tennis Club. And I don't know if that's something we want to delve into as a council, bring it up from the Parks and Rec's recommendation, look at. But I think there's some churning of the waters going on there, and I'm not sure how-
Would that be a sort of a separate item, and not necessarily under our, our, our strategic plan? Wouldn't that be a, I don't know?
I just, through, through the chair, as you might recall, the city council approved a new fee structure that included charges and, and alternate charges for resident versus non-resident for use of tennis courts. Implementation of that recommendation has been considered by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And they have been grappling with the definition of what is a resident versus non-resident, and we will be reporting, as a matter of course, to the city council in the future on what the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation would be. So, I mean, that is something that is part of the routine work of the, of the staff in the Parks and Recreation Commission relative to the implementation of past action from the city council. And so I don't know that you need to add it to the strategic plan unless you want us to delve into that in more depth.
But it will be coming to us.
Yes, we will report back to you with respect to the recommendation of the commission.
Is that okay with you, Mr.?
Yeah, as long as it's getting handled, that's fine.
Okay, good. Any other questions or, or, not questions, but comments or additions or deficiencies? I'm sorry, Mr. Royce?
Sure. So I have two. My first one does not recommend any change. I think what we hear is, is fine, but I just want to make sure that I provide some notes here to the city manager to get back to our police chief. On maintaining public safety, the first item talks about consideration of moving our, what we call our red light camera, which is down by the REI, by Industrial and Britton. I just want to make sure that before we move ahead, in his report, that he does look at, I really would like to understand what the overall safety enhancements are. I mean, this is not meant to be a profit maker. I think there's a lot of capital costs that we put into this. There's some revenue from citations, but it's generally meant not to, meant to be more breakeven. If we start moving these, I want to know what that impact is from a cost, if we're moving these every six to 12 months. At the time we installed this, I had made a recommendation that we consider the wiring and the pole structures and so forth, so that we could do a flip. Right now, it catches people coming off the freeway going eastbound. Maybe we could do a less, a much more efficient, cost-effective way of just flipping it to westbound, people jumping on the freeway. If that was set up, I'm not sure if that, that was set up. And questions like, if we move the camera out of that, does that intersection become an unsafe situation again six months later? So my overall feeling is, I'm really mixed on the red light cameras. This was our first one. It seems like now the scope and the cost and, and the whole process of the red light is now changing if we're going to be moving this thing around. I want to make sure that the report includes these types of things I'm talking about before we proceed in doing any changing to, to our red light. So again, no change to our objective here. I just want to highlight to our city manager what I'll be looking for when we see that report at the end of the year. And the second item, which would be a proposal for an addition, is in the area of the enhanced community awareness, involvement, and engagement.
Page your own, please.
This would be on page F. And when, when I look through the five items, I think we have some good items there. I, I, I feel that we really have made a tremendous improvement over the last year on efforts that have been made to increase community awareness of the financial situation, kind of the breaking point that we called it and, and so forth, a lot of the presentations that our city manager has done. And I still think that with this next year, with, with a measure on, on the ballot that may be passed or may not, with mid-budget review, with State of California takeaways, there still is going to be a major impact on our city's financial situation and how it impacts services. So I, I would think that we would like to add something where the owners would be, both city council and city manager, to, to continue to, to, to provide frequent updates on our financial situation and communication to, to the public, and mainly, I mean, I'm sorry, to give them the communication and updates on two items, the financial, financial condition and the impact on service levels as we navigate through this next year. I think it's really important, and I'd, I'd like to see that momentum carry on.
But my, my only question is, we currently do that, right, at our city council meetings? And so is it's, are you looking for something different than is currently done? I mean, I totally agree with you, but I guess I think it's happening.
Sure.
So I'm not sure what you're-
I think it's happened this last year, and we've done a good job. And I think it's going to be more important next year. But it hasn't happened, I think, in prior years that much.
So, I mean, I'm assuming what the current practice that we have is going to be maintained, unless we're told differently, but I, I guess I'm just looking at objectives that are new, if, you know, so that's, I guess that's a maintain. Is that right? What's been going on for the last 12 months?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I completely agree with that. I'm just not, you're right. If there were going to be less, I would be like, okay, let's make sure we stay on this.
So, Mr. City Manager, we're anticipating, or Mr. Malpe, we weren't anticipating just continuing our practice we have in the last year?
Through the chair, I mean, what we will have, according to the plan that is currently here, is in December, we will have an additional meeting to speak specifically to a response for the November election. And so, that will be on the council agenda. That will be new and enhanced from what would be part of the routine. The next step as part of the routine is in February, we will do the mid-year budget report, taking into account what the city council has done at the December meeting, specific to the direction. So, the new thing that's already included within the plan is a, not a special meeting, but an item, an agenda item on a regular meeting to have a public discussion of what we're going to be facing with or without passage of the revenue measure. So, that is already there. Now, if Councilmember Royce is asking for us to produce a newsletter, such as what we've done this past year, or if he's asking for town hall meetings, such as what we've done this past year, that would be something new and additional that the council may or may not be interested in. And I don't know if that's where Councilmember Royce is going or not, but currently, there is something in the plan specific to finances in December that is new and enhanced from what we've done routinely in previous years.
Okay. Yeah. Good. All right. So, Mr. Malpe, you mentioned, any other questions or comments? Mr. Malpe, you mentioned the facilitator recommended reading something into the record?
Yeah, the entire plan.
When you say that, what do you mean, reading? Reading what?
I would, I will read into the record the mission statement, the vision statement, the core goals, the three-year, the core values, the three-year goals, and all 41 objectives. And it's your decision if you'd like me to read that. Otherwise, you can take action as you've amended it tonight in terms of adopting it. I'm happy to read it if you'd like. I have a PowerPoint. This PowerPoint will run on the city's TV channel, showing all 41 objectives over and over for the next six months. So, it will be there, but your decision. I know in the past, some mayors have wanted me to read it. Some mayors have given me the hook.
My call?
What are you? I get the middle chair.
Yeah, I get the middle chair. You know, it's a bit voluminous. I mean, to read everything. It's going to be on there. I'd love to say there's a summary, but there isn't because there are 41 different objectives.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would suggest that at least we highlight the change we made, which is to add, we took away a goal and then we added a goal. The new goal is preserve and enhance our distinct community character, and we might just highlight that.
Okay.
You know, perhaps Mr. Malpe would speak for us about why that was done a little bit.
Okay. Why don't we do that, Mr. Malpe? We did change some of the, one of the goals here. Why don't you just speak to that, and then we'll let the PowerPoint on the tele, on Channel 27 speak for itself?
Speak for the rest.
As opposed to reading for 41.
Very good. The one significant change to the structure of the three-year goals, and as you recall, the three-year goals were reevaluated and fully re-adopted six months ago as part of the last, last strategic plan, number seven. Those were all reevaluated and put in place. One of the goals, which was improve the quality of life, the name was changed, revised, to preserve and enhance our distinct community character. And we developed 10 goals, or 10 six-month objectives for that goal and identified one future-forward, yet-to-be-date-specific goal for it as well.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call for a vote on this.
Mr. Malpe, this will also, this is somewhere on our website as well.
It's on the website right now. We'll pull it off tomorrow just to make the revisions. And I am, just before you take action on this item, a little confused if you ended up adding, did you add a new objective around?
We added two words to one existing.
Right. Okay. So, that's the only change?
Yes.
And just so the public knows, since this is televised, if you go to the city website, where can you, understanding it's going to be down for a little bit, this particular item, can you just talk us through where?
If I'm not mistaken, if you go to city council, it's under the city council tab on the city's homepage, and it's listed as strategic plan.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe. Do you have a motion for item 9A?
Move to approve 9A.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the city of San Carlos strategic plan for the next period of time, three-year goals and six-month objectives.
Through the chair, just to be clear, this is as amended with the...
As amended, I'm sorry. Yes, as amended.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bowden, would you do a roll call for us on this, please?
Councilmember Ammon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 9B, consideration of authorizing the Public Works Director to sign a letter of support for grant application by the Bay Area Stormwater Management Agencies Association to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for investigation and abatement of PCB pollution. Mr. Wile?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The San Carlos is one of five locations that would be subject of this grant application. It's, you know, we really don't know what our shot is at getting this grant application. This is the first time that we've been applied, allowed to apply for a grant for something that we're required to do by permit anyways. So, that's new. But it's, I think it's insightful by the EPA that if you want to see progress, let's put some money toward the problem. And it would address a, the drainage area of the Pogus Creek Pump Station. And I'll put that up here. So, Pogus Creek Pump Station is here in yellow, and the red line surrounds that, is the area surrounding that. And that's the low-lying part of San Carlos, an industrial area. You see green dots, blue dots, yellow dots, red dots. Those are kind of the various levels of PCB contamination that were found in the storm drain system in that area in a 2003 study. So, this makes a good use of grant funds because it's a nicely contained, small area that they can investigate, and the grant can be used to identify different options for actually dealing with the problem, from maybe better street sweeping in this area. What if we sweep the streets once a day and pick up all the dust that's on the streets? What about devices in the catch bases that would filter out the soil and take that out? So, this would be a nice area to test some prototype designs to actually clean up the problem. And that's what the grant fund would be used for if it's obtained. So, all that we're asking for right now is approval to get on board with the grant. It would just be sending a letter of support for that.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Wile?
Yes.
Is there a gentleman, Mr. Boros, would like to speak on this item? Mr. Boros, you want to come forward?
Mr. Councilman, my name is Lou Boros, and I talked to Robert in regards to this, not in particular what, I wasn't sure that this is what it was going to be. I thought it was had something to do with the storm drains and the flooding that we were going to have. I mean, this that came up was, you know, I mean, to filter out water going to the bay, I understand that. I still think my problem is more critical and more important than something like this. I'd like to see some grant funds or something. If we can get some money someplace, I'd like to start getting it for El Camino and 16, 15, 16, 1700 block down there where we flood every year. This, when I, when I talked to Robert in regards to coming here for this meeting, I thought it had something to do with that rather than the filtering out of the water for the storm drain. So, I apologize for...
Don't worry. No problem.
Putting my name in for the thing.
No, no problem at all.
Thank you.
And we have heard you this time and the last time, Mr. Boros. And I'm sure Mr. Wile is doing his best to try to figure out if there's some grant money for this. So, thank you for your comments. All right.
I just have one question, and that is, I know there has been some talk with the East Side Community Group, I think it's called General East Side now, East San Carlos. Does this address some of the issues that they've brought up?
I think it partially addresses the concerns. The, the grant application only goes partway into the residential area. I mean, that's one street into the residential area. So, it doesn't fully address the issues of concern to them. I think I've gotten feedback that they're appreciative that the city acknowledges that it's an issue that needs to be dealt with, and the city's seeking grant application to at least start working on it.
Well, and you said in here that money is, part of it would be used for investigation into the sources.
Correct.
Which might help them because it's likely it might be the same source for their neighborhood.
If we come up with good tools to solve the problem, those tools could then be used in that neighborhood.
Sure. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot.
Quick question for you. Page two of the report, I got stumped a little bit. It says that PCBs were detected at concentrations ranging from 3,000 to 11,000. I was trying to figure out what an UG was. I guess that's a microgram?
Microgram.
Okay. So...
I don't think we, yeah, with the...
Don't have the mu?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. I was stumped trying to figure out what an UG was, but...
Those are boots.
Those are boots, Uggs. Yeah, clearly.
One boot.
And I'm so fashion-forward, I didn't know that.
Okay.
Two Gs.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll consider a motion for this, please.
I would move approval of this, of item 9B.
Write the letter. All right.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded, authorize the Public Works Director to sign the letter and hopefully get a grant, some grant money for us. Would you have a roll call on this, please, Mrs. Malpe?
Councilmember Ammon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to 9C, consideration of appointing a member of the city council as the policymaker working group for the Peninsula Segment of the California High-Speed Rail Project. Mr. Wile?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a meeting coming up on October 15th, 6:00 p.m., right here in San Carlos, the first meeting of the policymaker working group. They didn't give a whole lot of information about future meetings, and I did try to get some. I asked, will all of the meetings be at the Samtrans offices? They replied that this is the first meeting for this working group, but we anticipate having future meetings at the Samtrans location. But if other members want to move the meeting, they'll talk about that, basically. So, most likely, it's going to be here in San Carlos. Will all of the meetings be in the evening? Similarly, the answer was a little bit evasive. We try to be, we will try to be as flexible as possible about the meeting time going forward. So, this can also be discussed with representatives at the first meeting. Third question, how often will the meetings be held? They say that they're going to have the policymaker working group meetings following the technical working group meetings, and those are on a quarterly basis. The technical working group meetings upcoming would be January 2010 and April 2010. So, it looks like there'd be two more meetings after this one of this policymaker working group, sometime in January and sometime in April, May.
Okay. So, as they say, you know, other things, we're looking for volunteers.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Ammon? Do we need to vote on this? Appointing the member?
It's by consensus. You don't have to have a formal vote.
All right. Consensus, Mr. Ammon, then. Thank you for taking that responsibility.
Sure.
And letting us know about more information about the high-speed rail with the working group. Okay. So, we'll now move back to the items pulled off. The cent calendar, the first item is I, dot resolution approving the fats, oils, grease inspection program proposed by the SVSA. Mr. Grokot?
Sure. I just, the question I had regarding this item has to do with a statement here that the cost increases for fog, which is fats, organics, and grease, I think? Is that what that stands for?
Fats, oils, and grease.
Huh?
Oil.
Fats, oils, and grease. Yeah. So, to pay for this inspection program, which it looks like the inspection program would be aimed at mostly restaurants.
Correct.
And maybe some other commercial activities.
That's right.
But it says the cost increase will need to be factored into future wastewater rates. So, the question I had is, will that be weighted towards commercial? Will that be a consideration for us at the time? Who will control that? Or will it be just across the board, evenly distributed to everyone tied into the system?
I think it would make sense to build those into the rates for the people who generate fat soils and grease and generate the need for the inspection program. There is a separate rate for restaurants right now, and that would make sense to distribute the cost of this program to that restaurant rate.
Mm-hmm. So, that's, so when the rate changes are brought to council, that'll be a consideration?
Right.
Right.
Well, that will be probably next, next spring. You know, spring is the time for Prop 218 hearings.
Okay.
And we'll be bringing you a rate increase at that, a rate recommendation, at least at that time for the following fiscal year.
All right. Well, then, I'm comfortable with the item.
Okay. And why don't we just go one, we'll just make one motion at the end, hopefully. Item M, Mr. Grokot?
Let me look at this real quick. Oh, this had to do with the, yeah, the environmental aspect of our general plan. And I just, I don't know if you want to put these all together. I don't, I'm not comfortable with spending an additional $10,000, thereabouts, on this item, so...
Well, in that case, why don't we go back then, and if I could, let's vote on, if I could have a motion for I, please?
Move to approve 6I.
Sir, second, please?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 6I. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay. Is there any more discussion on item M? Okay. I'd move, or excuse me, ask for a motion, please?
Move to approve 6M.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 6M. Ms. Bowden, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Ammon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Thank you. And item N, Mr. Grokot?
So, on item N, I had some questions for staff on this. Perhaps we could have a little report, and then we could get into it a little bit.
Mr. Sewicki, do you have a report for us?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item relates to a below-market rate unit across the street of Pacific hacienda. Under the terms of the resale restriction on the unit, we have the opportunity to repurchase and assign that right to the next interested purchaser, eligible purchaser, from our BMR waitlist. This particular unit has come available at the same time that we have 17 other units coming available at 1,001 Laurel. Those units are newer and are priced at a lower price because of different assumptions that have been used over the years for these units. What we are recommending is that the redevelopment agency repurchase this unit, hold it until the inventory at 1,001 Laurel is cleared out, at which point, we can probably find a buyer for this unit without having to write the price down. It will still be affordable, but we won't lose money by writing it down, and we won't lose the unit by letting it go back to the market, to the, to a fair market value.
So, I have a couple of questions. And as far as our involvement in it as a RDA, is we loaned money?
The unit was created through the BMR ordinance, which is actually a city ordinance. The resale price restriction that was put on the unit is in favor of the agency, so the agency can act to do the repurchase and resale. Typically, what we do is we just assign that right, so the agency doesn't really need to be involved. As long as we find an appropriate buyer, we can assign that right, and that eligible buyer can then assume the unit, you know, pay, buy it from the, from the existing unit holder. In this case...
So, excuse me, just to be, so we're understanding. You have a BMR applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Who bought the unit in the first place? Now that BMR applicant is selling the unit to another BMR applicant?
Correct. In this case, we don't have another eligible buyer because we have an inventory of newer, lower-priced units to go through before we can get to someone who will purchase this unit.
Who holds the loan?
The loan? I would assume a private bank, whoever the unit holder got financing.
So, in terms of a loan, we have no financial obligation whatsoever?
I don't believe there is a down payment assistance loan on this unit, but I'm not sure. In which case, we would be taking that loan out as well in the repurchase.
See, that's what I'm trying to get after is, if I, if I may, is I was looking to see if we had any money involved in this because we're, if we have money involved as a loan, then we're, we have to look at, how much are we spending as holding costs to try and protect the loan that we had initially? And if we don't have a loan, then what are we trying to protect other than a unit that we call BMR?
That's apparently what we are trying to do, is protect the unit.
Correct.
Otherwise, we would go to sea and just walk away and make a profit, right?
Right.
Which we still, which I guess we, that's another option.
That is an option, yes.
Yes.
We would lose the, we would have one less affordable unit, um, and the, the profit that we would make is a fraction of the cost to actually replace that unit, so.
Okay, but if we, now, if we made a profit, um, I forget exactly how much that was that was in here.
Twenty-five thousand to-
Twenty-five to thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Okay. And might that amount that would go, that would, that profit would go to the RDA?
Go to the city's housing and lieu fund, go into the Fund 28.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to answer your question.
That's, that's okay.
Looking right down the road here.
So, could there be the possibility of then taking that profit if we just went ahead and put it on the market as a regular unit?
Mm-hmm.
Take the profit, go to 1001 El Camino and ask them, can we create, can we, can we use this money against the price of a regular unit to create another BMR unit? If that's really what we're trying to do, is keep a BMR unit on the, on the books.
We would only have $25,000 to spend on a new market rate unit, which they're selling for $500,000, so it wouldn't go very far. We would have to use more agency funds to replace the unit.
But we're also talking about spending six to eleven, and we don't know, that's a guess for holding costs.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, wouldn't it create a new BMR unit, though, right? There's, isn't there seventeen at 1001 El Camino?
Correct.
And it wouldn't create eighteen? It would just be buying one of the seventeen?
Yeah, no, he's talking about buying a, a regular, he, Mr. Grocott said, I think, buy a market rate, you can't buy a market rate unit for $25,000, it won't work.
Well, in a way, I'm saying, yeah, you offer to the developer, look, here's our, here's twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars, whatever our profit is, uh, take that and mark down the price of one of your regular units to create another BMR unit, if that's really what we're after.
Mm-hmm.
I guess the, you know, when I read through this, it, to me, it's, you know, it's where this kind of activity, trying to, trying to get in there and handle the market is difficult to do, and now we're in a situation where things are going down and, you know, it's created a difficulty. It, I, I don't like the policy at all, is getting involved with the, the housing market and try to create certain rates and so forth. But here we are, and now we're trying to spend, or we, we could get caught spending six to eleven thousand, which is an estimate for the holding cost, because what the staff report is saying is they want to buy the market, hold it, wait till 1001 El Camino is out of the picture, so we're not competing with it anymore, and then put this unit back on the market as a BMR without competition from lower, lower-cost, brand-new units of the same kind. But, and I, I question that a little bit, because that's, that's fine if it's a closed market, if you're really trying to buy in San Carlos, but you can go to Belmont, you can go to Redwood City, you can go to Foster City, you can go to other places and buy BMR units. You don't have to, you know, a buyer does not necessarily have to stay in San Carlos. Now, if they're really want to buy in San Carlos and be close to downtown San Carlos, I guess that's one thing, but-
I'm not, I'm not clear what you're proposing as an option.
Well, I'm proposing as an option, C, let's just sell that darn thing-
Lose a BMR unit?
Lose a BMR unit, you know, how much of a loss is that? That's-
Through the chair, how many BMR units is San Carlos supposed to have? We have a quote, I mean, we have a quota that we're supposed to have, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
The RIN number?
The, the RIN number. The Redevelopment Agency is actually ahead of its production goals, um, but as more housing is developed in the project area, uh, we could fall behind if we're not producing these units. The, the BMR ordinance is actually set up to help us, you know, meet or stay ahead of those production goals. The, the RIN number is, is, is a much higher number. Again, it's not a, it's not a production goal, it's more of a planning goal, it's a target to try to move towards, um, and, and yes, removing BMR units is putting us behind instead of ahead of the game, so. We have, we have very few of them, we have a, a waiting list of a hundred people, um, we've gone through seventy of those people so far at 1001 Laurel. We've got interest from about twenty-five, we've got, um, two people ready to close. So the agent is, is, is working through the list, and actually, we're, we're about to start adding, uh, more people to the list. So there's, there's a market for them, um, it's just a matter of the timing right now of having these other units ahead of an older unit.
Mark, couple of questions. Do we have much risk of having other BMR units come our way over the next six to twelve months, the way the market is? And we're talking about one here, but should we be considering, you know, what if there could be three or four by the end of the year, or you think this is an isolated case?
I think it's an isolated case.
Okay.
And I think we'll, we'll probably go through the inventory at 1001 Laurel-
So my comments and a kind of a mini-question is, I'm very much in support, there's a lot of value in, in retaining this unit, uh, a lot more than what we would sell it for, twenty-five thousand, we'd be behind one, there's a lot more value to our city for that. The only thing I'm uncomfortable about is holding it for six or twelve months and the cost, is there, because I don't like, we're not in the business to hold homes for sale. Is there any way to, or would it be an advantage just to discount, spend ten or twenty, eat ten or twenty now, discount it down and just get rid of it ASAP? Or is, is it better to wait, do you think?
Um, well, actually, that was, option two was to, to write the price down, um, to an amount equivalent at 1001 Laurel, that would be a loss of $50,000 if we were to try to make them on par. I, I don't see any, yes, we could do something in between. Technically, we're actually not, uh, holding the unit, we're not, we're not taking it off the market. It will still be on the market, but the reality is, if you have a choice, well, if you have a choice, you may actually choose this unit over 1001 Laurel, that, that, there is a possibility, but from the agent's perspective, she thinks that, um, until the 1001 Laurel units are sold-
Yeah, so you're not holding it, you're holding the classification.
Right.
I understand, okay, thank you, that, that was a good answer.
Follow-up on that, we have the right to repurchase, do we have to do it, in other words, there's a unit for sale.
Mm-hmm.
Until there's an offer made, we don't have to do anything, do we? Don't we have the right of first refusal, or right, or do we have to decide now?
We have the right to repurchase, we've given notice that we will exercise that right, and we have, uh, until October ninth, I believe, to close escrow, so we've, we're kind of running out of time-
It doesn't work the way I'd like it to work, where you just put it out there, and if no one wants to buy it, we don't have, it doesn't cost us any money, it just sits there, and then if someone makes an offer, we can match it, but that, that's not the way it works, apparently.
No.
It's the other way. I wonder why we never, is that common, the way it's done all the time? It would seem like it would be advantageous to us to have the right to match.
Well, the idea is not to make this unit available to the, to the market-
Right.
-unless we don't want to keep it as a BMR unit.
Well, okay.
In which case, we don't exercise our right to repurchase, you let it go back in the market we share.
I understand, but you see, my point is, we're, we're spending, if we, if we exercise it now, we have to spend the money. Why are we rushing? Why don't we just let it sit there, and if some buyer comes up, then we go, oh, sorry, it's a BMR unit, we'll take it.
Uh, to be fair to the person who owns that unit, who is trying to sell it and, and move on, um, we, we have a, we have a, a window within the resale, uh, agreement to make this offer to-
So that's the way, that's the way these BMR things are written?
Right.
And that's standard?
Right.
Okay.
And typically, we just assign the right to the next available buyer.
I understand, and normally, this never comes up, but, I mean, I guess I never realized, I always just thought we had the right to match, so we sort of take the, with these BMR units, we technically take some risk with this when we sell a BMR unit, originally. We take the risk that this may happen, as opposed to putting all the risk on the buyer.
Right, and it, the assumption is that the prices should rise over time?
No, I understand, yeah.
What we did was, we've, we've changed our, our assumptions to make them more affordable.
I understand, but, but, but the basic tenet is, is when the city or the agency has BMR units, we actually are risking, we are at risk minimally, perhaps, but at risk, just like the buyer is. The buyer only assumes partial risk, not all of the risk.
We don't have to repurchase it, we don't-
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about-
I don't know if I'd call it risk.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, we're having to spend six, eleven thousand dollars in the real world, in the real world.
Right.
If you had, if it was written that we had a right to match, Mr. Smith can come in and, comes in, I got an offer. Well, now, we preclude that, we go in and go, never mind, we'll, we'll take it.
At BMR price.
At BMR price. I guess I'm just, I, I'm confused.
If someone wants, if someone is, qualifies by the income limits to purchase this unit, they can make an offer.
Right.
We're not, we would like that, we would like to-
I understand, why don't we wait for that? Why aren't we waiting for that? Why are we, I don't mean to set a pool-
We're looking for more time.
Why are we helping, why are we helping the person who owns this unit? To sell it?
Where's, I, I understand where you-
I mean, we gave it to me, there was a big advantage for them to buy it to begin with.
We would have to rewrite the agreements going forward-
Okay, I don't want to rewrite the world, but I'm just, I, I'm confused, again, from my background, unfortunately, it's a little bit different. That's, I'm, I'm not, I don't mean to criticize, I'm just asking, we, though, when we, when these BMR units are sold, we, technically, we assume part of the risk.
We're, we're, um, helping them because it's, we're interested in keeping a BMR unit, and I think it's, it, it could be, um, difficult if any potential buyer knew that the city, as soon as an offer was forthcoming, was going to sweep up and keep it a BMR unit, even though we could write it that way.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's going to make an offer on it.
But they're going to, it's a BMR unit, so somebody has to qualify under a BMR situation. Why are we precluding, why are we making the offer before even a, I'm not saying it's selling at market.
I don't think we're making it before, there's a time limit here.
Because the reason-
It's not this money.
Because any, anybody who's buying BMR units in San Carlos these days, they're going to take a look at the price on this and walk away, because they can know they can go to 1001 El Camino, get a brand-new unit, brand-new carpets-
Okay.
-never been used before, and pay thousands less-
Get it.
-and be in San Carlos. And so this unit is going to sit here-
I, I get that.
Okay.
Why are we taking risk to, why are we, again, it's, it's a-
Where does the time limit come in?
The time limit comes in-
For the existing buyer, if they want to put it up.
The buyer notifies us of their intent to sell.
Okay.
We have a, we have a timeframe in which we have to exercise our right to repurchase.
So that's the way they write it, so we-
Right.
-in effect, we are taking part of the risks then for all these BMR units, because the other way would be, you just have to wait, unfortunately, Mr. Jones, until the market comes to you.
Mm-hmm.
That would be the other option on that. I mean, if we wrote it that way, Mr. Jones would have to wait for the BMR person out there, all those units to be sold in 1001, before he or she could move.
So he would have to buy into the same restrictions that the city believes in philosophically, or has voted for philosophically, that, that, there's going to be somebody that, of an income level that's going to, right, he would take that risk as opposed to the city taking that risk.
Because if, if that timeframe passes, then this owner could just sell it on the market.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the way it's written now, but-
It's a BMR unit.
My point is that we are taking a risk on all these things.
Right.